Welcome to the special call meeting of July 18th. All the meeting to order at this time. We're going to go ahead and go through the whole thing. We're going to do the pledge of allegiance and then invocation and welcome.
... to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have the things or you want me to read them? All right. We do have a quorum and I'm going to go ahead and read. The vision is empowering, empowering and inspiring all students to achieve their full potential. In our mission statement, WISD is dedicated to excellence in education that fosters a culture of kindness and respect, creates lifelong learners and empowers students to make a positive impact in the community. We believe that everything we do should help ensure success of all our students. As educators, we maximize class time in an engaging and challenging way. Our teachers are personally invested in our students. Students in Wimberley are committed to a community service and the community supports students in their return. Quality public education drives a future of a successful Texas. As a district, we strive to meet the needs of the whole child academically, emotionally, and socially. WISD provides a foundation to create engaged citizens who will become lifelong learners. All our children, parents, faculty, and staff should be treated with kindness and respect. We are committed to excellence in all we do. Our goals are to achieve excellence in education, foster a culture of kindness and respect, create lifelong learners, make a positive community impact. Okay. At this time, we're going to move into public forum. We have one person signed up to speak and it's Mr. Tucker Blythe. Mr. Blythe, just to remind you, you have three minutes. Persons who wish to present public comments must sign up, which you did. Anybody else that wants to sign up, now's your chance. Each speaker submitted comments will be allowed three minutes for presentation to the board with a six minutes granted to a person with a translator. A group of five persons or more shall appoint one speaker who will be allowed three minutes for public comments. Same rules will be observed for public comments on non-agenda items with the following exceptions. Public comments on non-agenda items will only be scheduled for regular meetings of the board. The total time that would be allowed for the non-agenda public comments would be 30 minutes. Please keep your comments or criticisms civil and courteous. Please avoid, please also avoid using profanity and refrain from making personal attacks on others. Except for the speaker's student, no other student's name or identity should be discussed. If you have a concern that you would like heard and resolved, please present your concern through the district's grievance policies. Grievance forms can be obtained at the central office or district website. Trustees are not allowed, are not permitted by law to respond or discuss public comments. However, the board president may direct speakers to the appropriate administrator for further discussion. And with that, we'll yield our time to Mr. Blythe.
I'm sorry, Ken, can you go back over that just one more time?
I'd be happy to. I need to take a breath.
Well, this is real short. You're not going to have to put up with three minutes, but you know, it occurred to me 36 years ago, 1986, a bunch of pioneers got up and decided to form a school district, something that at the time was unprecedented. It was really frightening and they caught flak because pioneers get arrows. Since that time, Wimberley's been an initiator, so many different programs at so many different levels, it's done a great job. And this is a case where WISD can again step up and take an unprecedented move to educate, better educate students, not just here, but have an influence across the state and maybe in a way that Wimberley will, well, again, be a pioneer to help, help other schools and, and students. We could get ahead of the curve. We can be pioneers again. Likely 1882 is going to have benefits, not just for the district financially and, and by reputation, but it should also elevate student performance across the state as students get involved in this sort of a project. It's definitely something different, but the easy thing is the way you eat an elephant is one bite at a time, right? So I'm just suggesting that what you do is you reach out for those RFPs, look at those. If it works for you, fine. If it doesn't, that's fine too. And I yield my time.
Thank you very much. Okay. Well, that's our public forum time, so I can turn the page. And we're going to have item number three, discuss and possibly consider action on publishing a call for quality school partnerships in accordance with Senate Bill 1882. And at this time, I will start with my friend, Mr. Greg, Dr. Greg Bonewal.
Thank you, sir. So just to go back a little bit, on March 27th, the board had approved a policy that would allow for the potential for creating partnerships and had provided direction to the superintendent to work on an RFP, or in this case, I'll use the terminology, call for quality schools, to potentially seek partners. And so the staff has been working to better understand that in order to be able to put something together for the board to discuss and consider. Is this better? Oh, thank you. Still learning up here. So you have before you draft of what is essentially two documents, even though they're stapled together. The, the first one is, is really a one pager. That's something that could potentially be published as a call for quality schools for partners who might be interested in responding. Some fairly standard language within there and guiding people on where they could go for additional information if they were interested in considering an application to partner with the district. That's the one pager. And then the much lengthier document is the local campus partner application. And so a large portion of this document is simply a template. TEA publishes, here is standard language that they recommend considering usage of. And then within that document, they provide some spaces for districts to provide greater specificity around specific criteria that the district might be requiring of any partner. Also, that's primarily on page three of that document. And then on the following page, they have an area where the district is supposed to specify a general timeframe by which the process would unfold, so that any potential partners would know what to expect if they were going to submit an application. Now, these, on page three, those criteria are criteria that were put together based on input from lots of folks that I've been hearing from about this, people who had been involved in the conversation before I arrived in the district, and then some conversations that I've been able to have with our administrative leadership team.
Greg, can I ask you one quick question? You sent this out via email and then I understand that you changed something between now and then, is that correct, in this form right here?
Yes. On page three, item number four, when I sent this out to the board, so you'd have an opportunity if possible to review prior to tonight, I did get a response of a recommendation to consider modifying the language on what would be item number four. It was around language around indemnifying the district from legal claims. And I received a recommendation from Mr. Malone, which was right in your wheelhouse, sir, thank you, to modify that language. And so that, that is the only change from the draft that I sent previously, with the exception of the logo being added.
Yes, okay.
Can you maybe summarize the nature of that, or was it minor, just legalese, or was, help us maybe understand what you caught?
Yeah, I mean, just if you look at item four, it's, it's got some new language there. I think that was, there was some language in there that just said the partner won't indemnify
Okay.
the school district for, I don't remember exactly what it said, something like.
The attorney's cause.
Would you like for me to read it?
The old one? Yeah, if you want to read the old one.
Okay.
Indemnify the WISD Board of Trustees and all employees of the Wimberley ISD in all matters, both legally and financially.
Yeah, so, so we just kind of broaden the language out. It just now it says release, hold harmless, and indemnify Wimberley ISD, the Wimberley ISD Board of Trustees, and Wimberley ISD faculty and staff from and against any and all claims, losses, and/or costs arising from the local campus partnership, including but not limited to court costs and attorney's fees related to defending any such claim. In the event of a claim against Wimberley ISD arising from the local campus partnership, wherein Wimberley ISD is required to engage counsel, Wimberley ISD shall have the right to hire the counsel of its choice, and the local, local campus partners shall be responsible for the payment of the attorney's fees.
Okay. That makes sense. We just got a little more specific and granular. Okay.
And I think Mr. Malone's help there also underscores something that would be important for me to share with the board is, we are in uncharted territory in terms of creating something of this type. And so we have not yet had our own legal counsel that's employed by the district review this, so that would likely be an appropriate step for us prior to any submission externally if the board would choose to go that direction. But, so you'll see those.
Ken? Yes. Rob Campbell is on the line.
Hey, buddy. Thanks so much. Hey, Joe, thank you so much for that holistic approach. I just wanted to add that that was very beneficial to the overall approach and that's all I want to say. Thanks, sir.
So you have those, those 12 areas that were identified there. Again, those aren't set in stone, they're not based on some model that was being followed previously, just taken from, from feedback and information that I've received up to this point.
And just to clarify then, those 12, those items that are in red on our paper are, well, I guess all 12 items, those are, is that what we would consider kind of like our non-negotiables that we want all of our partners to adhere to when they submit an RFP?
Exactly. TEA's goal, is my understanding, is to provide as much specificity as possible to any people wanting to consider a partnership, so they're not wasting their time if the district's conditions don't meet what they would be willing to do or able to do.
Okay.
And, and those are certainly, be expanded, modified, edited, deleted, added to.
Okay.
And then on the following page, page four, there's the request for the application timeline. And so I think I mentioned in the, in the email I sent with the initial document that in my mind, I started sort of with the end in mind of if this was something that the board was wanting to consider in September, working backward from there, the, all the required steps, if the district were to put out a call for applications and we received responses, that would trigger a three-person committee that by policy would then review all responses and determine whether there were one or more who met the criteria to be recommended. And then it would require interviews after that of those responding entities who were being considered. And then it would require a recommendation to the superintendent from that committee. And then it would require a recommendation from me to the board before an ultimate vote. According to the TEA timeline that I shared with you previously, it noted in their timeline that if we were going to form a partnership and qualify for the additional 1882 funding for students enrolled, that, it didn't list a specific day, it said mid-October. So technically, if the board wanted to move forward, but wanted to have some additional time, September timeframe isn't the last ditch, there's about a month wiggle room. But beyond that, the wiggle room, as I understand it, would be gone in order to qualify for the additional funding for the following year if we entered into a partnership. And beyond that information, it's, it's really all standard language from, directly from TEA, there's nothing, there's no spot there for the district to change. If we were to change anything about the instrument, then we would need to send that to TEA and request approval basically, for any modifications to the document beyond those areas that they already identify for us to provide specificity.
Before we move forward, do we need to discuss the policy that we voted on to, to approve this? Is there any clarification of that, or is that?
Yeah, well, I would share with you that Dottie and I were talking recently, you'll notice on the, on the very front page, the one pager with the call, the quality schools that I highlighted, the policy is available online. Typically what happens when the board approves a policy, then Dottie sends that document to Tasby and they upload it to our online system where it's viewable by, you know, everyone. When she went to upload that, the, the version that she had available to her was, was a draft version. And the special call board meeting, when the board approved the policy, typically we would find that policy attached within your board book of what you were addressing. And so the Tasby responded back and said, can you get us a cleaned up copy of this? And just wanting to make sure that we are following the process and providing them what the board actually approved, Dottie and I were struggling with producing that document because it wasn't a part of the board book. I'm uncertain about what that means in terms of whether or not we would need to ask the board to, we have the language and it's not different than the draft language that we provided. There's a spot there where it asks for us to denote specifically a couple of attachments, which are very much similar in nature to this application that you're looking at right here, but they were not a part of the, the actual approval process based on what documentation Dottie and I were able to grab. So I'm not sure if we're missing something there, or if we may have to come back, say at our August 3rd budget workshop and ask the board to approve that. I need to get additional information on that.
So you're saying there's no real expediency to that at the moment, that we could do that, we can still have this meeting, get everything done, and then clean that language up?
That's correct.
Okay. All right. Okay. Well, we definitely need to look into that. It's not anything we can do tonight, because it's not really on our agenda, so. I guess at this point, we're ready to discuss 1882. So do I have any discussion on item number three?
So Ken, there's several folks on the phone. I wonder if it'd be a good idea to introduce them and have them give their expertise so that we know who to direct questions to.
I would love that. So we're going to go kind of in line, Rob Campbell's already said hi, he's online. Next, we have Aaron Harris on my board and I'm just going to go by the line. So Mr. Harris, would you mind introducing yourself and kind of telling us why you're here? Excellent. Okay. Maybe we'll move to Ms. Whitehurst and, and move with that and then come back to Mr.
Hi, my name is Leah Whitehurst. I work for a company called Responsive Education Solutions and we have operated several 1882 partnerships in Texas and just offered to, to serve as a resource for the district partner if they needed it. I apologize. I have two little ones.
That's why we're here, is for the children. Mr. O'Handlon, would you like to speak with us, please?
Yes, sir. Kevin O'Handlon, trustees and Mr. Superintendent, I've been asked to participate in this as a legal resource for the drafting of this and possibly the creation of a partnership. So I'm here to answer any technical questions that people might have. I've created a number of these in the past. I'm former general counsel at TEA, so I kind of know how these things work. So I'm not here on the podium and that's your business. I'm here to answer legal, to provide legal resources if you need them.
Perfect. Mr. Harris, were you able to get on? So just to reiterate, these guys are representing our public, they're not really representing the school district, they're here to help us to answer questions that we may have. They seem to be experts in the field, so. So from there, if Mr. Harris wants to, if it comes on at any time, let me know and we'll be glad to bring you in the conversation. Anybody have any discussion on item number three?
I'd be happy to kick us off. I think it's important, as we discuss the importance of this potential move forward and on consideration of partnership that this board is, is considering, that first and foremost, that we kind of set the table for the public and for the record of kind of where we started and kind of where we are. Most people, in my experience, understandably so, don't follow the day-to-day actions of most governmental entities. They're busy with their, their day-to-day lives and frankly trying to keep their, their head above water like everybody else. And I'm all for pioneeringism and being a pioneer, but there are ways in which, I guess if you know your history, I consider Lewis and Clark pioneers, but they did quite a bit of due diligence and quite a bit of thought prior to heading out and exploring what manifest destiny would ultimately be in our country. And so I think that that is the, kind of the, the environment in which I am speaking from that point of position today. We went through as a board, really our first major challenge in responsibility as a board when we had several new electees to this board, you know, starting with myself, going to Lexi and to Nathan, to Andrea, over the past couple of years. But we have had a huge significant turnover in leadership in our district. That is essential. We had a superintendent that served for a very long time, an assistant superintendent who served for a very long time. And this board, first and foremost, has the responsibility to go through a, a thorough, detailed, long process of selecting our new superintendent as that first piece, first major piece of this whole process of, of selecting our new leadership for, for the district. And in my opinion, and I would hope that the rest of the board shares that opinion, we went through a very hideous, detailed process and I think that we unanimously feel like that we came out successful in the selection of Dr. Bonewal. So this subject matter came up in a, if I remember correctly, in a superintendent report that our former superintendent discussed in May, his last official, official board meeting, I believe. And the board and the superintendent at the time knew really little to nothing about this subject matter. I'll speak for myself, I knew absolutely nothing about this subject matter besides a brief conversation that I'd had with some, some people that I respect in the community that brought this idea to my attention and I believe shared this idea with other board members that are here. The board made a very general, in my view, a very general motion to move forward, to explore the possibilities and to, to look into the subject matter. On the parallel track, we were transitioning new leadership in this district. So Mr. Bonewal comes in somewhere around the beginning of June. In fairness, and I take responsibility for this as well, you know, this subject matter was not discussed during any of our interviewing processes with any candidate that came through this district. Greg talked a lot about developing first and foremost, kicking off the new school year obviously was the most, most intimate issue that, that needed to be addressed. But he talked a great deal about going through a visionary plan for the district and a comprehensive plan, if you will, for the district and getting all the professionals within our district, the public within our district, and the board to work for months in and months out to develop the vision and the comprehensive plan on how we'll move forward. And he spoke in great detail about that exercise and that practice and how that would be the guiding principles for the school district and for the board. And, and we spoke very positively that we bought into that. He comes on board. Since that point in time, he has written superintendent weekly updates and I don't know the opinion of the rest of the board, but they've been quite thorough on how he has been spending his time and how he has been working through multiple different subject matters that's relevant to this school district and to the superintendent position, from hiring a new assistant superintendent to addressing issues at Dollar General in regards to our logo, to working a great deal of time on understanding our budget, to working with the, getting to know the stakeholders and people within the district. And he has spent a great deal of his time starting off as new superintendent, trying to do his best to understand this objective in which the board has given him to look into. And he writes about it quite extensively through a series of superintendent weekly report? Oh, I consider that a matter of public record. Is that not a matter of public record? Do we have an attorney that's actually representing this district here tonight? We don't. I'll go off my 17-year history of being in public service and you email me something, it's a matter of public record unless it involves an employee or sensitive subject matter to a student. So with that being said, they go through extensive, on June 8th, he talks about, and I appreciate everybody's patience, I know some people would maybe just like to move forward, but I think this is important, at least to get out on the record for the entire public to understand. And he talks about, on June 9th, he talks about in great detail on, on a Thursday meeting that he had with Dr. Campbell, trying to understand, you know, where he should go and, and what he should do in collecting this information. And he goes through some very specific concerns that he, that he has about this particular subject matter. June 16th, he again talks about how he and Ms. Howard were working with TEA and related to SB, Senate Bill 1882 information related to the board's recent discussions regarding consideration of an external partnership. He and, and Ms. Howard then met with Tracy Dean and Joe Basil to further understand what was being proposed to the district. You go to June 23rd, at this point in time, he's starting to put with the rest of our staff some real meat on the bone and held a virtual meeting with TEA representatives. Marion Shute Shuttle, can't read the last three letters, Director of the Division of the District. uh Director of the Division of Charter School Authorizing and Administration and Lindsey Denham, Director of Resources and the Support for the Division of Charter School Authoriz- Authorization. Uh, he and Dee Howard and Board Member Justice were also present in this meeting, lasted approximately about an hour and a half, and they talked about um a deep deal, great deal of subject matter in that meeting. And uh, uh, and I'm gonna bring this, some of this stuff back to to our contract today or our our draft proposal. He goes through a series of of different notes that were taken, uh, trying to better understand eighteen eighty-two and this kind of new new niche to eighteen eighty-two's that this school board would be considering. Um, something that really took uh drew my attention is that um, you know, DEA noted that in the model, so they have a model, even though the Wimberly ISD partnership would technically be with a nonprofit organization, WISD would still have the oversight responsibilities for both the partner and nonprofit organization, any schools that the nonprofit organization chooses to work with. And um, I know we have um some counsel here today, um, on the screen that introduced himself, uh, that was Mr.
Mr. O'Hanlon.
Mr. O'Hanlon, um, you know, would love to hear his opinion on that. I do want to note for the record that Mr. O'Hanlon does not work for this district and does not represent uh this district either. He's a subject matter expert in this field of work, uh, so I think that's that's important.
So what's the specific question for Mr. O'Hanlon, and should we stop there and go ahead and let him answer that?
Sure, as long as I keep to get, keep getting through my setting the table here. But uh, you know, uh, we can be happy to do that. If you go back to page four, or I'm sorry, what's numbered, page three on the contract and some of the uh requirements that the board, that the uh, that staff has picked up to uh add to the basic template, as I understand it, the DEA has sent the district, number four, the indemnity clause that uh Mr. Malone suggested, expanding a little bit. I, and I, and I am not an attorney and I don't try to practice to be attorney, but I've been a part of a lot of public organizations and subdivisions, and I've also run a lot of businesses. And this is a genuine question. I have some real concern about how we may be indemnified. And at the same time, DEA is telling us that we carry carry responsibility. I I have a genuine uh conflict in my mind and 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 exactly how that works for the Wimberly ISD. And um, so if if, sir, O'Hanlon would care to respond to that, um, I'm open, open to that as well, but I I will go ahead and and say that I really believe we need some independent counsel that is representing strictly this district's interests to evaluate these many different circumstances and potential possibilities in which this RFP could be uh written and proposed. So I'll yield at this time and listen to the gentleman's comment.
Sure. First off, I absolutely, wholeheartedly endorse the impulse that Wimberly ISD should be represented by counsel to file negotiations of this disagreement.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, second, uh, it is correct to say that if this goes, uh, of course, this is all executory at this point, we're talking, we're in the discussion stage, but if it goes like it appears to go, and I've seen the drafts, the entity that will be created, uh, the operating unit would be a subchapter C charter, which is a an agreement, uh, it's created by an agreement between Wimberly ISD and a nonprofit, and a nonprofit. It could actually be more than one nonprofit. Uh, this is not a zero-sum game, you can have as many partnerships as you choose to award. That being said, the nature of the relationship is, from DEA's point of view, they are going to fund the district, uh, which is you. Uh, you're gonna pass the, you're going to uh pass the proceeds on to your operating partner presumably. How that is done is pretty open-ended, will be specified in the contract. So uh, the terms and conditions under which they earn payments under this have yet to be worked out, it'd be something that could be put in the contract. The forms that DEA have with respect to the payment obligations are pretty open-ended, so that's something that needs to be worked out in terms of uh how this works. Uh, you will be paid uh by DEA for students that are enrolled in this program on an ADA basis, just like all of your incumbent students, they will be essentially, well, they won't be essentially, they will be Wimberly ISD students, even though they may be educated by uh pro- uh other schools, other entities, and that, under contract with the district. The amount of oversight uh that you have is a function of contract. You need to have as much as you feel is necessary to protect your own interests. Typically, uh, these performance contracts have uh accounting kind of uh prescriptions with respect to how how money flows, uh, how audits are done, things of that nature. They also have very prescri- very degrees of prescription with respect to uh minimum academic standards, uh, but there's gonna have to be provisions in there uh for testing uh in order to meet all of the state standards and all of the special programs uh that are required uh by DEA for public school kids, special ed, bilingual, cop ed, things of that nature, just like a school district. These kids are gonna be public school kids. Uh, so uh, the amount of oversight, uh, the the amount of reporting, the amount of accountability to you is a function of uh how how the contract is drafted. Uh, there is a, there's kind of a trade-off, it's like there always is with respect to the uh, the contract oversight, uh, contract oversight on your end, on the school district's end, is important, but it it takes some resources. So there's a balance between how many resources you want to be committed to direct oversight and how much you wanna have with respect to indirect oversight through reporting and review. All of that is set forth in the contract. Uh, in all of these, the DEA calls them performance contracts, performance contracts requires, will require that the that any vendor that you have, any third-party uh nonprofit to meet academic standards and performance standards, uh, that will be negotiated uh for purposes of the contract. There will be kind of uh sanctions uh in all of these, there are in all of them so far, for if the vendor fails to meet the expectations with respect to performance. Uh, so all of that's negotiated, uh, all of that is subject to the discussion and and being put down uh with respect to uh the relationship between the parties. Part of this is the, the reason why the application is open-ended is, in a very real sense, uh, the uh, this is open-ended, so various people can make proposals to you uh as to uh how that they intend to offer, how to, how they intend to operate the program. Once you've seen their expression of that, then then we have a negotiation in terms of what you find acceptable, uh, what you uh find necessary to add in order to minimize to minimize your risk or exposure, like an indemnity provision and things of that nature. And if the parties can come to an agreement with respect to all those terms and conditions, then uh you enter into a performance contract. So there's a lot to be negotiated, uh, the amount of protection that you, that you could, that the district has will be essentially uh, uh, how much rope you that you decide to give to any vendor with respect to the operation or operational freedom with respect to how it intends around the party. Before you make a decision, and this, the RFP tonight doesn't have anything on that, it's pretty open-ended, they will make a proposal to you and after which there'll be negotiations on the express terms.
So I know there's been concern that this is gonna be an administrative burden on our current administrative staff. So if I'm understanding you right, Mr. O'Hanlon, um, it sounds to me like these partner RFPs could come back where they are shouldering a larger portion of that administrative burden than maybe we're expecting today as part of their proposal to us. Is that a fair assessment? Some may take on more than others?
Yes, let me give you an example, uh, that, uh, since these, since these schools, uh, uh, since, since the kids enrolled in this program or any performance program would be a public school kid, uh, even though they're, they don't live in the district, they're still a public school kid, you guys are enrolling them for purposes of entry into this program in your, in your program. There are PIMs, uh, PIMs, uh, reporting requirements for all these students because they are your students. Uh, I would expect any contract that you enter into with a, with a uh provider, uh, regardless of what the, what the format is in terms of the services they're going to provide, be that kind of a virtual school or or a brick and mortar school, uh, that contract would allocate the responsibility for preparing it, uh, data uh to your specifications for PIMs. Now, because these are all public school kids, the ultimate PIMs record, reporting requirement is yours, but uh, because you have to afford it in DEA system, that's how it works, but you can specify the format and the circumstances under which that is delivered to you to ease the administrative portion of of doing the accounting. So yeah, that would be more where I would expect. Uh, there'd be significant negotiations about what data you're, the district's gonna need for its own reporting uh requirements and how it's formatted and presented to the district and on what cycles and uh that kind of thing. Similarly, there'll be issues with respect to uh compensation if you're hiring them, what are the circumstances under which uh they could draw funds uh from the district for purposes of uh uh providing their, uh, funding their, their provision of services, but there'll be very specific terms and conditions on what uh, what, how that's done and what the basis of that is. The, the, on the most basic level, that, just like, just like every, uh, just like every principal and every teacher in every school knows, this system, the financial system that's runs on ADA, average daily attendance, and it starts with uh, uh, counting, counting noses a couple of times a day uh in 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 classrooms all over the district. How that's done in this situation will be something that needs to be very spe- very specifically worked out. Uh, and 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 essentially sent to you to, you don't have to chase it down, that'll be a performance term in the agreement so that you'll know what the, what to expect and when to expect it.
That's very helpful, thank you.
Thank you for those comments, and I think it is important, um, although time-consuming, I think it's important that we, we, as Mr. O'Hanlon discussed, if the board decided to move forward beyond these steps, the next thing would be a formal contract that would come in and a negotiation between us and a nonprofit vendor. And there's, that's a point to where a lot of details uh would be and should be uh worked out. And also is important, in my experience, that the call for quality schools or or a generalized term being an RFP, a request for proposal, that we try to, in our interest and frankly in the vendor's interest as well, um, you know, I I know transportation, for example, when you go out for these RFPs, usually it costs a, a vendor or firm, anywhere firm, depending on the project, anywhere from, from thirty to eighty-five thousand dollars to put these types of proposals together. Now, I I don't know what it means in the school educational world of charter schools, but I know that is the case for uh, for public transportation, uh, meaning you really should have that RFQ, that or RFP, I should say, in this case, called a, a call for quality schools. I think as as tight as you can possibly make it, therefore, the vendor clearly understands uh the terms and the conditions in which you will entertain a proposal, and that gives them very clear direction on, on how to best proceed or to make a call not to proceed, not to make that investment and working within the the call process. Uh, so, you know, my number four, to give you a little practical uh perspective, and I do appreciate everybody's patience, but this is, this is important work and and we're all volunteering our time here and put time into it, so I appreciate people's patience. I I would give you the same. When I read number four, what first came to mind is when I was elected a county commissioner in Hayes County in two thousand and four. When I became a commissioner in two thousand and five, shortly after that period of time, Hayes County, I may be off a little bit on the credit rating, I, this was a long time ago, Hayes County had a, had a double A bond rating. Yeah, that's like a, a rating for, you know, personally, we have credit scores, right? Uh, and that was a pretty good credit score, pretty good bond rating, uh, for where Hayes County was historically and from a revenue sense at that point in time. If you know your timeline and know anything about criminal justice and criminal justice reform mid-nineties, early two thousand, there were a lot of private partnerships put together with private vendors and local political subdivisions and state political subdivisions to put together um, um, different types of of agreements to do different types of services within justice system. In Hayes County, they had entered into an agreement for a private vendor to run and to manage the juvenile detentions facility in San Marcos in which the county had run, and it was pouring money into left and right. This private vendor came about, they did an agreement. The county was just going to pay, was gonna allow this vendor to use the facility and was gonna pay what it was currently contributing to the budget, and was not going to be responsible for any cost increases over that, which the county had had significant cost increases over a period of time. So the county entered into this agreement. Well, when I first came into office, the credit rating agencies changed Hayes County's bond rating voices from a double A to a minus triple B. Um, you know what that means intimately, and and for those that don't, it means that uh your public entity uh becomes much more expensive and much more difficult to get a loan, and it is a huge financial burden. In layman's terms, it's like your credit score going from eight hundred to six hundred or five hundred. It's a, it's a bad deal. Because they said ultimately, although we were indemnified in this contract and we had all these types of of real arm length distances from this private vendor, the credit agencies at their own discretion determined that we were still ultimately responsible as this vendor had faulted on, on a lot of different um, with financial responsibilities. Dan Wegmiller, who was the county's financial advisor and also the financial advisor of this ISD, I don't know if he's been consulted about any of this, um, and myself and at the time, uh, the county judge, went to New York, met with the rating agencies and um made our case that this was not our responsibility, they still refused to change our rating. Ultimately, long story short, we had to come home, we had to buy out that vendor and that agreement, we had to retake over our juvenile detention facility, we had to inherit that debt in which that juvenile uh facility had, had allocated, and that debt was paid off some ten years ago by Hayes County Tax- was paid off some ten years ago by Hayes County taxpayers over a seven year period of time. Our credit rating was then reestablished back to a double A rating. It's a long ways coming to through some of those experiences and working in in several different forms of public-private partnerships. That's why these types of things are so important to vet to the greatest detail, because there's a lot of unattended consequences when you go through these things. There's not one person on this board that has a has an ill intention. Everybody on this board is trying to do what they perceive to be best for this district. I'm just trying to cover some of the concerns in my sole capacity and role here to bring up some of the subject matter to help perfect this potential proposal if it goes out and to put the district in the strongest position possible. So I appreciate your comments, Mr. O'Handlon. I very much appreciate your recommendation for us to hire independent counsel that represents this district to work with us in this matter as well.
If I could just point out, Will, that that meeting that I was able to sit in with Greg and Dee and those two women from T E A that really helped give a great overview of how this works, and I was able to answer a lot of questions or ask a lot of questions of them. One of the things they also helped us to understand was that the T E A has got a grant out there that would support districts financially and some of these costs associated with getting this up and running, including, I would assume, legal costs, and we can confirm that. But I think that's something to really think about. I certainly hear your concern that, you know, there are unknowns, and I think that is another good reason why I really respected and admired the support that the commissioner's willing to put behind this district in in making this happen financially, because I think he, you know, they can really guide us along in the process to help protect us from some of the unknowns that we don't know, but they they've definitely been made aware of as they've gone through this some in the past already, so.
I appreciate those comments, and you taking the time to sit in that meeting. You know, Mr. O'Handlon, not to get off kind of the course in which I was heading here, but, you know, something again that that I'm not certain about sitting here today, you called these prospective students, Wimberly ISD students, and I assume you say that from the perspective of of the district, but also from the perspective of the state, right? That these would be considered Wimberly ISD students regardless of a geographic location or where these students may be actually attending attending schools somewhere in our state?
That is true. If you that that it's just like it's a little known secret, although we have geographic districts, the public schools in the state of Texas can and do admit each other's students on a fairly regular basis. People kind of enroll in neighboring schools, fairly common practice. That is controlled. There's an old nineteen thirty-one Texas constitutional case that says the state cannot make you do that, but if the board chooses to do that, you may do that, if that's how you want to undergo your responsibilities with respect to that. So they're yours if you admit them into the program. If we create this program in order to admit them into the program, that you're going to have to take responsibility for them in an academic sense. In in exchange for that, T E A will compensate the district for that in a in a financial sense on an ADA basis for the kids that you educate, even if they're out of the district. Let me also say that, as I envision this, as I've kind of looked at this so far, we can control it in a much different sense, the financial of that than in a different sense than you had with respect to the accounting, the juvenile justice program, because we can we can fund this on a per student basis. That is, is that the what you're going to draw is or what you're going to contract in all likelihood, or certainly how I draw recommend drawing it up, is is that any vendor's going to get what the what they generate in state funding, basically, and that'll be passed through less some kind of a minute agreed upon administrative fee that Wimberly takes for the for the manage overall management of that. That would be negotiated based on what your what the relative allocation of responsibilities are between the two parties. So it is unlike juvenile in a such a way situation in which the county found itself because the county was the custodian of the kids but actually had no control over who was in or out of the system. Y'all, if we do this right.
Beyond state standards, there there are obviously standards that go with the juvenile detention centers, highly regulated by the state.
But in this case, you you will control the standards because that'll be part of the contract for the facilities and all that. And also, you would get the the funding source that you're getting from the state, we can match up via contract with your payment responsibility on the on the other side of it. So you become a pass through for that. If the kid doesn't qualify for whatever reason, then you don't owe the money.
Yes, sir.
And I think that's a really good point. I mean, this is another flavor of our current transfer student policy. If you want to if you wanted to still it down in simplest terms, that is, it's another flavor of that. It's another way of leveraging a tool like transfer students and having the same types of responsibilities related to those students that are on a separate campus that may not be sitting here in Wimberly, Texas. And I just think it's really exciting that we would have the opportunity to help kids in districts, possibly across the state, that for whatever reason, they're poor performing districts and and they're disadvantaged kids, and we are an exemplary school district that has a great opportunity to lead the way in supporting these kids and getting a better education. And that's really, really exciting for me, and I think something that our district should get behind as as an innovator and as a way of showing that we love and we care about all the kids in the state of Texas.
Joe, you had a question you wanted to ask?
While we were, Mr. O'Handlon, thank you for your time and joining us this evening. While we're on the subject of the financing of this, and this might be a question also or maybe possibly for Ms. Whitehurst, who's also there, we haven't really, in my understanding of this, been able to quantify what this looks like for W I S D from a financial standpoint. We certainly have talked at length about some of the administrative role that we would play and 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 burden, if you will, on our staff and and some of the things that, you know, are certainly not without a cost. And and I, you know, I I think that Andrea's comment is wonderful. You know, it's it's great to think that W I S D could step up and be a leader and and serve kids that live outside our community and bring our brand to the rest of the state. But, you know, I've been on this board long enough to know that this is an institution that runs on a budget, and it's a tight budget. And one of the comments that Mr. O'Handlon made a few minutes ago is that the institution under this country or the partner could draw funds from W I S D. I mean, that drawing funds is is, I don't know if anybody else heard that, but I mean, that's that's of concern, okay? So like the transfer student thing, as I got on the board, I didn't understand why we accepted transfer students. If you want to come to W I S D, you should live here, okay? So it took me a long time to wrap my head around that. And frankly, there's there's a benefit to those kids, but there's also a great benefit to this district. It allows us to have more teachers, more staff, and better serve our overall kids in this in this district. And and so then that started to really make sense to me, but that I had to be educated on that, okay? And and a lot of our community did too. So as I look at this program, a lot of that dynamic is the same. I mean, this is this is extremely innovative, okay? And there's there's a lot of moving parts to it, and we're going to get this proposal, maybe if we get to that point, where we're going to be able to kind of maybe sharpen the the pencil a little bit and understand this better. But I still, even before we go to that point, would like to really understand the finances here. Nobody's really been able to explain that. So is that any any of the panel, anybody that's joining us this evening, is anybody ever able to shed a little light on that for me?
Ms. Whitehurst, would you like to take a moment and address that?
Sure, I'd be happy to chime in here. I think one thing that I think is really important to think about in this, and I think Kevin pointed this out earlier, you're only, we're only or whoever's the partner is, is only getting funding for the students they serve. So it's not like ahead of time we've agreed to you giving the partner a certain amount of funds. It's literally the partner's only getting funds for the students they receive. And so as Kevin put it, I believe, is you would serve more as a pass through. And then in our experience, when we've had partnerships like this in the past, we negotiate what that per student amount is. So let's say that Wimberly ISD is getting eight thousand dollars a student, and then you negotiate with that partner that you're paying them seventy-five hundred dollars a student. So then there's an amount that you're an amount that you're retaining to cover your administrative costs. I don't know, again, I haven't reviewed your finances in depth to know what your per student funding amounts are and things like that, but just for simplistic numbers sake, you would work all of that out in your RFP process.
Let me let me take mine out into your gig. We're chapter forty-nine district, I believe, are you not?
Yes.
Okay, so the way that the way that chapter forty-nine works is is that since nineteen ninety-three is that you are attributed a maximum based on the wealth of the district per student weighted average daily attendance, you can levy a tax of, you can, you only got to yield a certain amount, and that's different in tier one and tier two a little bit, but still based on average daily attendance. If your wealth is exceeds the amount that is necessary in order to to meet that requirement, you can do one of several things. There's a provision in chapter forty-nine where you have to vote options. You can educate more students, or you can, but what they kind of buy virtual students from the state by entering into a recapture agreement. So let's assume that given, and I'm going to make these numbers up, I have not done the financial analysis in detail, so I can't tell you exactly. Let let me say that, let's guess that you have to pay recapture because you, if we did, if we do the the algebra, then you have to order, you have to educate a thousand more kids than your wealth will allow you to do. So let's assume that we enroll five hundred kids in average daily attendance in this program, then what happens is is your recapture bill goes down, that you have, because you're educating more students than are your students, the amount that you have to reimburse the state for in the form of recapture goes down based on exactly the cost of the recapture. So it's basically just like growing your ADA. You grow your ADA internally, organically with residents of the district, your recapture goes down. You could you could do it with these students as well in the same way. So what happens is is that you finance this program, and you would have to make the payments, but you're paying for them with essentially reduced recapture costs.
So there's kind of two sides to the equation. There is a there is a an incremental difference that we might not pass through to our partner that would show up as revenue to us, and in in Kalisa's example, five hundred dollars per student. And then on the other end of the equation, if we had a hundred students, that would decrease our recapture payments to the state by that hundred student amount that we would normally be subject to paying. So there's a there's two sides of it. There's an income and an expense side to to changing our numbers, if I'm if I'm hearing you right.
Yeah, but to flesh this out in detail, basically using Ms. Whitehurst's example, we did a hundred kids and it's at using eight thousand dollars. That eight hundred thousand, that hundred kids times eight thousand dollars, eight that's eight hundred thousand dollars. Eight thousand, yeah. So let's assume that if we add a hundred kids, I want to make sure I don't make you think you're getting richer than you are, that's a that's no point. Eight hundred thousand dollars, if we put if we put a hundred kids on the rolls, your bill, your your recapture goes down to the state by eight hundred thousand, okay? Let's assume, though, that in that same deal, that you agreed to pay, because you had overhead expenses and things of that nature, you agreed to pay the third-party provider seventy-five hundred dollars per weighted average daily attendance. So even though you were paying out seventy-five, you would still get seventy-five hundred, you still get eight thousand dollars worth of credit from T E A for those for those kids, which would go essentially to your general fund and be allocable to whatever lawful purpose that you had for running the district. So if you base the fee, based on the earlier question, if you base the fee based upon average daily attendance, then the situation's in balance that you won't get inadvertently behind, because your only responsibility to make payments to the vendor would be the same as you're going to get credit from T E A. So in order to do that, so you you've covered your liability on the backside. That's that's essentially, there's lots of details on that, special programs, federal funds, and because there's other collateral effects that are out there as well that would be discussed in the contract, but that, but to give you an example, federal funds, Title One fund, are based upon low-income kids in free and reduced price lunch accounts in the in the prior year. Let's assume that we started this program this year, we put in a hundred free and reduced price lunch kids, you won't get anything for that this year because it's based on last year's count. But next year, you will get more federal funds because you have educated an extra hundred kids. So that in terms of running the program would need to be allocated at some point when you, as it was earned, again, that's the details on how these things are drafted, but the idea is, is that the cost in terms of vendors would always have to be matched against an income on the on the revenue side for the district.
And I guess what was inconsistent, in my view, that I'm trying to really better understand, is this on-off relationship between those students being our students, lack of better description, and we reap the benefits of those students being Wimberly ISD students, and we do so with no responsibility.
You do have a responsibility.
So like, for example, just to give you an example, Mr. O'Handlon, what I was talking about, so when in one of our bullet points in this RFP, or call for quality schools, not to create an adverse impact to Wimberly ISD's academic accountability ratings with the Texas Education Agency, it includes a review mechanism to ensure partners do no harm to the district's academic rating. Also, back to the indemnity issue, back to some of the lack of financial responsibilities, it's a real genuine question I'm trying to figure out and try to marry, you know, for example, according to this bullet point, that that may be realistic, maybe maybe not, in our draft proposal here, as I understand how this reads, and somebody, correct me if I'm wrong, that that this that, that this relationship and through this nonprofit charter, that that cannot negatively impact, and which is in good standing, the academic accountability ratings that we have here in our geographic district.
That's not true.
Am I explaining kind of my confusion along?
Well, I think what this is though, is this is what we, we send them to bring back to us and say, how are you going to assure us that there will not be an adverse impact to our accountability ratings? And in their proposal back to us, they need to tell us what, what checks and balances, policies and procedures they're going to put in place so that we feel comfortable that we have, we have gates in place that if something's going on that is not to our standards, we're going to be alerted to it, and we can drop the relationship at that point before it does impact our standards. And we can put that in the contract. So, so this bullet here is just saying, we want you, as an RFP responder, to help us understand how you're going to support Wimberly's, Wimberly and not losing anything on these, these items.
That, let me get a little more, let me put a little more meat on that bone just briefly, and I won't overdo this.
Okay.
There, if you create a charter, we will put with a subchapter C charter, it's, it will have its own P E M's campus ID number. So it will not negatively affect the campus rating of any campus in the district. That's because it will have its own campus rating, okay? It could however, if there's enough kids and the performance is bad enough, affect the district's rating. So it is important that you choose wisely with respect to your partner, who your partner is, and that you make sure that you have safeguards that have you confident that you can meet those targets. There's a little bit of leeway or startup time on, on these things. The state will give you a little bit of time to get started. But correct, ultimately, you are responsible. These are your kids, you're responsible for the result on a district level, but not on a campus level.
Kalisa, is there in any of the arrangements that you're a part of right now, can you provide us some examples of how your organization does that today? And do you have similar types of standards that you're being asked adhere to?
Yes, absolutely, I can share that with y'all. One of the things that we usually do is we identify a target rating for the campus that we're operating. And so if we fail to meet that, that standard, then it's an opportunity for the district to terminate the contract. I'd propose something similar to that here.
And how often are those standards being reviewed in some of the contracts you're a part of?
I think, I think in most of our contracts, it's either five or 10 years. I have to go back and double check.
I mean, how often are you assessing, I guess, is a better word?
Now, if there's a, there are, and that'll be specified in the draft contract. You don't have to wait 10 years if there's performance issues, all right? We will define the performance issues that authorize you to do early termination if, if you, if you think find that to be necessary. One of these.
Yeah, that's a, that's a good clarification, Kevin. So usually it's a five to 10-year contract with the option to terminate if you don't meet certain performance standards in the first, second, third year, things like that.
That's what is called performance contract. It is the academic performance that is, that's why the performance is attached to in terms of TEA parlance.
Ms. Whitehurst, this is Lexi. I've got a question. In the event of the termination of that performance contract, especially if it happens mid-year, what, what becomes of the kids enrolled through that partnership?
I believe in the structure of most of our contracts, they're not, they wouldn't be terminated mid-year. So you would have the review when the ratings come out, and then you either make the decision before the year starts, or you make the decision at the conclusion of the year.
The, the, these things are almost always tied to start the star testing program, or whatever its progeny ends up being, too many. And that the, the way that TEA runs the testing and accountability system, the tests are administered in the spring, the results are preliminarily published in, kind of dribble out in May and June, depending on whether it's elementary or secondary. There's a makeup, the last chance in, in summer school, and then the final things are, are put out. So we would do it probably at the transition would be sometime based on the first and second test administrations, and something to that nature. Logically, it makes most sense to do this over the summer. Breaking it up in the middle of the year makes transitions difficult for the kids, and it just happens to match the accountability cycle.
Thank you.
And the, man, the comments that the two of you are discussing are based off what I would call the traditional 1882 agreement and charter school program of the state. I understand, I would assume and understand that there's parallels and similarities in this new evolution of the program perhaps, but, but you're basing this off a, a more traditional experience of 1882. Those are my words, but I, I think you understand what I'm asking. When you talk about how things have been done in the past, I don't understand that, that there's one agreement like this in the state of Texas currently with TEA, ISD subdivision.
There is not, but, but, but to be clear, TEA, these are, back to the original thing I said, these are public school kids in every way, shape or form. These public school kids, even if they're despards across the landscape in myriad other kinds of placements, they will be required to take the state academic assessment on the schedule and in accordance with the terms and conditions applied by the Texas Education Agency.
Yes, sir.
They will be, so this entity will, even though they're taught in multiple, possibly in multiple schools, the charter entity will have, will be responsible for the aggregated performance of the kids that are collectively enrolled in the, in their, in that program, no matter what their seat is, where they happen to be sitting. So the traditional TEA accountability rubric would apply in this situation, and there would be the same testing accountability standard for these kids as there are for the, the naturally enrolled or indigenous kids in your district.
Okay.
Does a two-year exemption period sound correct? Give us two years to bring those schools into a line, to get us to a good academic rating that we wouldn't be held harmless for, have an exemption period for that?
We'll have to look, the TA rules will evolve. We will have, have evolved, they evolved with each cycle. We will update that and include that provision in the, in any agreement, whether it be for these guys or for anybody else. That's something that has to be put in the agreement with respect to how this thing works.
Okay. And I'll try to conclude here quickly. If you continue on, you know, we're at June 23rd, I believe, with the report, which there's an extensive amount of information in there. Then you get to June 30th, there's an extensive amount of information there. You go to July 7th. Very much the same as our director and our staff continue to work with some of the people that are online today and to ask questions and to try to better understand the, the program in order to articulate it to the board accurately and clearly to the best of their ability. Meet again with TEA, again with Ms. Denham. You know, this is a new thing for the state as well. I think that's very much reflected in these notes and these comments. So there's some uncertainty, I believe, in all lens, as is inherent to new programs candidly. And then you get to a July 14th report, which tries to summarize some of more of these issues. And then you get to a email that was sent to our board on July 14th. And following the direction of the, of the board and the comments and the concerns and the statements that were made at our meeting, you know, our superintendent has continued to go forward and to try to find assessments from the professionals that work within our district. And the, I think this conclusion and writing, and I'm not going to read all this out loud, that's something that y'all could read on your own, is that, you know, at a minimum that the staff of the Wimberly ISD feels minimally involved and informed at this point in time. I think it's fair, and you grade my paper anywhere, Greg, that's different, that at least that first blush that they, you know, have a great deal of concern of how this would be perceived in the arena of public education and within their colleagues and associations throughout the state. And that there has been no clear path forward of community and stakeholder involvement. So I will say this and why that matters to me, to get to the point. We've heard tonight, and we've heard going through this process, and I believe their hearts to be in the right place. Some board members passionately articulate the potential in this type of partnership to help provide an option of opportunities for perhaps other Texas citizens that don't have the same academic privilege and opportunity that we have here at Wimberly ISD. And again, I want to emphasize, I believe those comments and those concerns are genuine. And I believe they're noble. I do believe, however, it's a bit out of our lane and our responsibility as a Board of Trustees. Directly, that responsibility is to our legislature and to our state officials. You read our constitution, read everything associated with public education. And if the state believed that it was such a strong idea, then I would believe that they would arrange this directly with TEA and move forward in these different geographic areas in order to provide these choices and these opportunities to Texans. That's hung thousand foot, good people can disagree with that. We were elected first and foremost to look after the interests of the taxpayer and the children of this district. That is, I think, pretty clear moving forward. Now, there are some potential financial benefits directly to this district that I think is germane to, obviously, our day-to-day responsibilities here as a district. But there also could be a lot of unintended consequences. And in this first part of this journey, what I have major concerns about and what's paramount to me is how this will be perceived and supported within our own community and within our staff. Selfishly speaking, not only is it inherent to the job in which I was elected to do and every board member up here was elected to do. I got young kids in, in our school district. They're 13, 10, eight years old, going into eighth grade, fifth grade, and third grade. Yeah, thank you. And time flies. And if we don't have the support of the professionals within our institution, we don't have the right culture, we don't have the right environment, this board is not supporting the directives of the superintendent down throughout our system, that's a real potential liability to our kids sitting in that classroom. That may perhaps impact our ability to retain the professionals to work within our district. That should mean something to everybody involved in this discussion. It should mean something that we could potentially have some real issues. Whether you agree or not, it's, it's irrelevant. Because it very well may be real within that world of profession. We may not have the ability to recruit. It's a tough labor market out there as it is. If anybody paying attention from small business owners, I own a little mechanic shop here at Wimberly. It is very hard to find people to turn a nut and change oil. It's hard in law enforcement, it's hard in all white-collar positions almost, particularly in this region of the day. It is extremely difficult in the world of education. We talk about that as a board on several occasions. We will continue to have those types of discussions as we go through the current budget process and into the foreseeable future. So what is utmost importance to me as a trustee, but most importantly as a parent that has kids in those schools, is that we maintain and continue to elevate the academic standard in the environment and the culture in a positive way in this school district. And I believe there are some real concerns that a program like this may dilute some of that. And that's where I generally start from and come from. And, and what's in my heart and what I initially have concern with. We're not a large school district. I mean, we have a small administration, and then we go into our principals and our assistant principals and our people that are literally in the classroom teaching our kids every day. And this has the potential to possibly create an opportunity for kids outside of our district. I will, I will submit that. It has an opportunity to perhaps create a unknown revenue source to go into, to our district and which we can use to hopefully enhance our current program. And I believe that's the intent of some of these ideas. But there, there are a lot of liabilities, and I think we need to be very careful and cognizant of those liabilities. Several have been already brought to the table by, by our professional staff. I think those are important. I think that, that it's important that we have a comprehensive discussion about this that involves everybody if we are going to, to at a minimum, maintain the excellent standards that we have here in this district. I have a lot of other comments and questions, I'll stop. I know people are probably sick of hearing from me at this point in time, but I wanted to make, wanted to make clear where I, where I stood on that. And then I would like to, when given the opportunity, other board members have had a chance to talk, talk about some potential paths forward that may draw consensus.
Yeah, thanks, Will. And if I could just speak a little bit to your last comment. And, you know, coming from the business world and spending many years in the business world, one of my jobs, to talk about past experience, was to roll out new programs and products to large groups of stakeholders. And it was a very methodical process that you would have to go through. And change management and communication planning is paramount to the success of rolling out new products, programs, and, and whatever it is, initiatives that you're trying to get people to grasp onto and catch the vision of. And I, and I will say that thus far, I think we could have done a better job as a board in making sure that the appropriate stakeholders thus far that need to be involved in the decision-making were better educated on what it is we're making a decision on. And I think moving forward, if we do choose to move forward with this RFP and have actual proposals in front of us with real information, real use cases, real numbers associated with them, possible contract negotiations, I think at that point, we should certainly bring in additional stakeholders. in additional stakeholders. And that would be part of a much more structured communication and change management plan that we would get feedback from stakeholders at that point, where we have actual things to talk about that are concrete and on paper and specific to a use case that our district might consider. I think, you know, I haven't heard anything about this program that is in any way going to affect the teachers on each of our existing four campuses here at WISD, other than the financial impact of us possibly having more funds to support them with. There's not going to be any lift from them. We're not asking them to do any additional work because this is a separate campus run by a partner. So, you know, I don't, I don't want to get them worried about that prematurely or ever because that's not even what this is about. So, you know, I think we need to make sure when we're communicating out to different stakeholders, that we have all the information that we need before we communicate. And otherwise, we get people confused and worried about things that maybe they don't need to be worried about. So my advice is that we move forward, getting an RFP or this call for quality schools, get it out there, see if anybody even responds to it. We don't even know if anybody will. See if anybody responds to it and see what use cases they bring to the table so that we can then have some really transparent communication with all the stakeholders, the community, the teachers, the staff, and help them understand what exactly it is we're proposing with this specific partner, if that makes sense.
Boy says, can I ask you a couple of questions, please? I've been on the board a long time and maybe I've misunderstood this forever, but it was always my understanding that non-recaptable students, I mean, transfer students are not subject to recapture. Is that, have I been mistaken in that? Or is that wrong terminology? Or can you?
Well, I think Mr. O'Hellen explained it pretty well. The only thing that can reduce your recapture is your additional ADA. So per one ADA, less, I think it was last month I gave you some spreadsheets that calculated how much recapture was reduced per each additional ADA that you added. And based on that, you reduce your recapture by 6,260 per one ADA that you add regardless of whether it's an in-district student or a transfer student. It's still increasing your total ADA that's reported on your PIMS since that's still a student that served in the district, so it's counted as a student in your PIMS report.
So I think it was just a nomenclature that I was misunderstanding.
Probably.
Okay. So if we added 100 students to our district, how would that help us?
I would need to calculate that, but now that I have a clearer picture of how the funding is going to work, recapture would be reduced significantly, just multiply that by 6,260, which, let's say, for example, 6,260 times 100, that would reduce your recapture by 62,600. So anything that we can reduce recapture, of course, helps a lot. The only concern that I had while y'all were discussing is that since funding is kind of settled up at the end of the year, you would adopt a budget with a projected amount of ADA that you would expect to receive until the end of the year. So for the entire year, you're going to be operating with a funding that you don't have. So your fund balance needs to be healthy enough for you to be able to make those payments that you're going to be required to do to that other contracting entity until at the end of the year it's settled up, the state funds you or reduces your recapture and funds you for that additional ADA. Just an FYI there.
Boy says, can I clarify the ADA and the recapture piece? So even if the ADA increases and we do a full 100% pass-through to between the administrative partner and the partner's school, are the impact to our budget is still a net positive of the 6260? Is that correct? Or per one ADA?
From what I can understand, yes. And plus, you're going to be funded, or you're going to be paying your admin fees with that grant that hopefully we qualify, and I'm assuming we will be. So that would be funded through the grant while we initiate this program. Is that correct?
I think the thing that might be hard for us to calculate right now is what the cost is in terms of resources to provide whatever level of oversight is ultimately required.
Yeah.
That would be an unknown cost.
But if it is funded through the grant, it would be at no cost to the district.
I will, regarding the technical assistance grant, my understanding of that at this point is that that is a grant that goes to pay for a consultant to help the district administration navigate through the process. It's not a check that comes to us for us to then determine how to spend. I just had a conversation with a TEA rep this afternoon, and she shared with me that those are done through an agreement through the region service center. And so they facilitate those agreements, but ultimately, the funding goes to the consulting agency, not to the district.
But still, in that case, a one-time?
Yeah, it's a one-time, just to help you over the course of what I assume is a few months' process.
And can that be used for legal fees as well, to help in kind of reviewing contracts and things like that, do you know?
Not to my understanding, it's actually to pay individuals who do this to help other.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, we can get clarification on that.
So if that is the case, you would probably be operating in the red, in the year, during the year that you're, the start of the contract, until you get your funding and reduce recapture until the end of the, or the beginning of the following year, year two.
If I can, if I can insert, if that, in my, in the past, and I have not spoken directly with TEA with respect to this matter, but in the past, the, if there are significant events in the district, the recapture is not paid at once. Actually, you can elect to pay it all at once at the end of the year. And if you pay it all at once at the end of the year, you will know what the funding is when you make that calculation, because you will have done your June, you have done your June snapshot, PIMS update. So you can, if you choose to hold the recapture firm and not make the progress payments, you can account for that difference.
Yes, and we do make our recapture payment at the end of the year.
Okay, so, and that makes more sense in this environment because the Public Funds Investment Act interest rates are starting to go up again, so it makes some sense to do that.
But we'd still be required to pass through money to the partner's school, correct? Okay.
Yeah, but we could negotiate that too, to where we pay a significant chunk at the end of the year, could we not?
Well, you would have, let's assume, for example, let's assume that as you went through, you're making progress payments to the third party, to the charter operator on a monthly basis. If you, if you are convinced that if you do the accounting right, you will know that you're going to get a return on investment from those payments because you will have ADA in the bank that will allow you to do even a partial year, reduce your recapture. So let's assume that you do this program and it, I'm not saying that it will, I don't want to scare anybody, but let's assume that we do this, we do 100 kids, and then it folds in December, and you paid the district something, well, that 100 kids times the ADA rate, times half a year, will come off your recapture, even if the system didn't finish the year. So if you set it up right, the payments, and you make sure you have the data to do that, you will be able to make those payments out of the retained recapture for which you are reducing the cost. So you never, you never, you never provide payments to the vendor beyond that which you're going to get credit for in the recapture payment when that settle-up is done in August. So it's possible to do the math and do that arrangement in that way to protect yourself from that.
Will brings up a good point about the call for a quality school. We want to make sure that if we send something out, that the people know exactly what they're getting into. So with this grant, does that then help us set that call for quality school out? Because I don't want to send something half-done, they take all this time and, you know, respond to that, and then they go, whoa, we didn't know you meant that, oh, we didn't know you meant that. So how do we, how do we make sure that doesn't happen?
And I would add to that comment, but again, I've seen where a political subdivision has sent out an RFP and RFQ, and it was not done completely. Those vendors have gone out, invested time, have submitted, the jurisdiction recalled that RFP and RFQ. And then those vendors have filed suit against that jurisdiction for basically wasting their time or adding conditions in which disqualified them once their proposal was sent in. But there's some liability, there is some real liability to it as well, it's just not a willy-nilly exercise. There's real formality to it. And so, not saying never, but saying, hey, let's slow down and get some counsel that directly represents us, that, you know, respectfully to all of us and myself on the top of this list, none of us fully understand what we're talking about here. Our superintendent has put in writing, he doesn't fully understand what we're talking about here. I'm fair to say, none of us are statewide experts on public education. None of our staff is. Brings some people in who actually work on this subject matter, the specifics of the matter on a regular basis and have decades of experience in the history and institutional knowledge of this.
As I'm thinking through kind of some of the other potential unintended consequences, we don't have anything here, you know, Will's example of the bond rating, right? That's a huge deal. Obviously, for all of us right now, school safety is top of mind. What could we, would we include in this list of non-negotiables that addresses the physical safety of these kids that are our kids, but we don't have physical control over their environment?
It is possible to negotiate facility standards, if, I mean, that would be, depending on where you are with respect to that, facility standards for potential subcontractors or schools that do that, what their standards are in terms of that. Remembering that the higher the standards, the more that drives cost, so you got to kind of think about that. But it is legally permissible to include any of those kinds of standards in terms of what the contractor does. That'd be subject to negotiation. There's, you're writing on a blank slate with respect to these requirements, but potentially includeable, anything, the more requirements that you have, the higher the cost is going to be. So it may, you may price yourself out of the market if you have too many standards, but it is something that you can do if that's an important consideration.
Thank you. Another option is just to go with virtual partners, you know, that conduct their classes virtually. I'm just thinking out loud, but, you know, we're probably going to get RFPs, or we may get RFPs from completely virtual campuses, and in that case, the school security issue is a little different, but, yeah.
Can I speak to a comment that was made, Andrea, that you made earlier? Of not seeing any potential liability to the district as far as, my word, staff time, you know, additional burdens.
To the teaching staff, is what I was referring to.
The teaching staff.
The current campus staff.
Yes, ma'am. I've never been in, at the forefront of statewide political fight. I've been a part of them, but I have not been at the forefront of them. I have been at the forefront of regional, regional political fights at the legislature and in this region and specific to this, to this geographic area. You would be shocked, I believe, and surprised about whoever it is, to say plainly, who doesn't like what you're doing. Think of it the opposite way. If another ISD came into our ISD and started taking revenues from Wimberly ISD, how would this district would spawn? How would those districts respond? And in this circumstance, a lot of these districts perhaps are going to be much larger and more well-equipped to deal with and to fight on this subject matter than our little $29 million district. That said, it becomes a huge burden to your administrative staff and to the people that work for you because they are constantly being bombarded with open records requests. They're constantly being bombarded by the press, by associations, by lobbying firms, by political interest, by PACs, by the entire political establishment and environment. And that may be something that this district wants to fight on. I'm just telling you that that's a very real possible reality of something like this, and it becomes a huge burden. Hays County did something that was kind of pioneering. Once, we basically had to hire a whole additional staff to just deal with the level and volumes of open record requests and things that were coming into the county to just manage all the things that were involved. So perhaps that would not happen. Subject matter as sensitive as this, I believe that it may, I think it's very likely. And there's a real burden and cost that come associated with that. I've seen in almost paralyzed jurisdictions before. So I say that respectfully, I am just sharing perspective that I've had and things that I've learned in similar circumstances. And it's a big lift for whatever political subdivision is going through it.
Yeah, I will say that there has been a generous donor that is willing to kind of cover the cost of an administrative staff that might be needed to help support this in our community. So I think that's something that we need to also consider as part of this. I mean, that's a valid concern, Will. I respect that, and I'd like to look at a solution for that.
Let me insert one thing with respect to the concerns in terms of what's out there. It is unlikely that this would increase any burden on the campus, on any campus, because this is its own campus. So there will be, there will be interface requirements, those would happen at the level of central administration. That would be the plug-in. That would not be any, it's difficult for me to conceive how this would have any kind of particular effect on any campus-based personnel because they're not on that campus. So the impact would be on district-level personnel, not on the campus. So if the concern is about campus, I don't think that's realistic. It is reasonable to be concerned about impact on district-wide personnel.
If I just might. Essentially, I would agree with that, but from a practical standpoint here in Wimberly, if our administrative team, i.e. Greg and Dee and some of the folks in the front office are being pulled away from being able to engage with our teams on the local campuses, our principals and assistant principals, that, you know, essentially creates a situation where that is a burden on those campuses. So I guess maybe there's not a reporting requirement and some of those things, but there is kind of a practical impact that needs to be considered. I wanted to change the subject a little bit. I wanted to go back to what Andrea said about just engaging the community more in this process, and which I thought was well-stated. And I wanted to ask Greg if he thought in this occupation timeline that's been laid out here, if there would be an opportunity to effectively engage the community? if there would be an opportunity to effectively engage the community on this, on this process, maybe after proposals are received? Because I, I think that's really a critical component of what we're trying to do here. This is so innovative that, you know, we, we, we can't act without that community input.
So when I think about the, the timeline that's set out in front of us with the September date that was included in the draft, we would expect to receive all proposals by August 26th, right? And then based on the policy that the board approved, on PEA's model policy, the superintendent is charged with creating this three-member panel. And as far as I understand, it's pretty clear-cut and dry, right? There's a template that they use to score, basically a rubric of those responding entities. And then they make a recommendation to the superintendent based on that. So in thinking about how that might occur, I think that's something I'm challenged with thinking through. How do we bring, how do we honor the responsibility placed upon that three-member crew? That committee, if they're charged with making the recommendation, it's not, at least traditionally as I've read, bills in that that three-member group then goes out and seeks input before deciding whether to make a recommendation to the superintendent. That's certainly something I could explore with TEA to see if that's allowable and/or recommend for that to take place as a part of the three-member panel review and determination of whether they want to make a recommendation of the superintendent for or against any respondents.
Joe, may I interject just to point a clarity here since it's been brought up? The formality of the, I think it's relevant to your question, to the review committee? Trying to find where it is actually written. I understand, basically what I understood that I read this after. Design of the review committee is a minimum standard. That it's not, you know, you shall have one, two, three, that you will have a minimum standard of, and I haven't been able to find it yet in my notes, whatever it was, it was. H2?
Yeah.
Which, which area? Oh, here it is. Rigorous view of written application conducted by the review committee of at least, of at least three members, including at least one district staff member, one external evaluator with relevant and diverse expertise. So again, I'm not an attorney. I read that as, as a bare minimum requirement. So that the board, if they wanted to, could expand and elaborate on that. And then, and then who makes these selections and how it's, is chosen is something I, I haven't comprehended up until this point, which is obviously an important piece of the process. Greg, if you would do your best to answer that and Joe's general question.
Sure. Well, first off, I'm showing my, that I'm in the learning process too, because absolutely how it reads, it would appear that you could have a committee larger than three.
Yes, sir.
I, I believe I've read previously that the superintendent has the responsibility to determine who that committee is.
Okay.
I do have to say that it, I do like the fact that it appears that we could have a larger than just three voices weighing in on such an important decision. I think the other part of your question is part of the concern I've expressed to the board. That there's a, what I consider to be sort of an evolution in our society of expectation of access to information. It's just not specific to education. People want to know that they've been kept in the loop and rightfully so. And, and so part of what I've been working through in coming into the district with this innovative program that's being considered is how do I responsibly and effectively, thoughtfully bring awareness to our staff? And will there be concern on the part of the staff? Their initial, our or my initial attempt to bring awareness is after the call has gone out and the responses have been received. And I can certainly see, and I think this justice makes a, a good point, that it definitely provides more clarity to what we would be discussing. My wondering is if there's any advantage to providing access to information more globally on what the district is considering.
I think that was kind of just like opening this up to have a conversation with whoever wants to come here. I hear all the questions, so I think that's why we do want to have it. Get some people with expertise to be able to question them and folks that can maybe get the answers to. It's been helpful again for me. Hopefully it's been a helpful one. I'm certainly not suggesting we not communicate that. I'm just suggesting we make sure we can answer questions clearly when they're asked of us.
It makes total sense. And, and I think, you know, one of the great things about our school district and a school district of our size is in typical situations, when you need to share information, it's this great blessing that a superintendent can go to four campuses and be in front of almost 100% of their staff and remove some of the, the wondering that can oftentimes exist when you're thinking about entering into something new. And, and so I think that was my desire as someone that they haven't yet met, was, was to be able to try to alleviate any unwarranted potentially concerns just because of a lack of information being shared.
I don't know why I feel like I want to do this, but can I ask Ms. Whitehurst, do you have any kind of thought on what the political fallout might be for our district? We've been through what we thought was gigantic, that's issues with our logo. And that took hours and hours and hours of our superintendent's time. And I just want to make sure that we're prepared for that should that happen. So Ms. Whitehurst, do you have any thought on that situation?
Um, our experience and our partnerships has not been, we haven't received a lot of political blowback. I do understand that this partnership structure y'all are exploring is a little different than what we've done in the past. And so I think I'd, I'd certainly be prepared for some people to object to it. But I also think when we're, when you're doing innovative things, our experience has been that people always do like to, there's always someone that objects to the innovation.
Thank you.
Sure.
Absolutely.
Mr. Hanlon, you've kind of dug into this a little bit. Would you be willing to share, in your opinion, some of the potential pitfalls or blind spots that we really need to consider carefully when we, you know, put out the, number one, in putting out a proposal like this? And then also as we go through the contract negotiation, and you've got a wealth of experience there with TEA and, and, you know, any kind of input, we might not have an opportunity to have you in a forum like this again. So just figured we might, you know, just have, kind of ask an open-ended question for you to respond to.
Ms. Trow Hanlon, did you hear Joe's question?
Oh, yeah. Was that for me? In terms of the, the circumstances, there will be, the teacher organizations are, will be against this because they don't like charters, period. That, you can depend on, except from the conversation that I've heard from the dais tonight. That seems like that, that has already started. I think that there are, there will be people that resist on the basis of that. And they're going to say you're draining resources away from, from the, the local campuses, which I, we could write this to where that doesn't happen. The issue, so the, the politics, it will be whether, how, essentially where y'all are with respect to the relative value of extending your brand, doing something innovative, doing something kind of on the, on the, on the edge of this, if that's important to you versus kind of staying home and taking, taking in your regular business and not being involved in it. We've heard both discussions of that. I think that's a reasonable balance point. I don't know how the board weighs that. That's something that y'all are going to have to consider in terms of what you're responsible, how you read your responsibilities. Are they, are they to strictly your community? Are they to the educational enterprise writ large, if you will, in terms of what's going on in the state? Only y'all can decide that, not, not TEA, not, not certainly us in terms of that. So you guys are going to have to read the, the, the environment in terms of that. We can control costs. We can control, we can control accountability procedures. We can control physical arrangements by being careful and understanding what your concerns are with respect to, for example, the classrooms and securities, that, that kind of stuff. So there will be many people, whenever you do something kind of off the map, people get, people, some people like it, some people don't. And you're just going to have to, I can't advise you with respect, I think your community is going to take that.
Is anybody? Go ahead. I'm sorry.
We can control TEA. I don't, I don't mean control them. We could, we could write an agreement that deals with PEA concerns that would affect your accountability and both in a financial sense and in an academic sense to satisfy their concerns for, for this and to protect you. But there's still a question of do you want to depart, do you want to do something non-traditional or not? What's your taste for that?
In the interest of trying to draw a consensus here, break some bread, which is my intention and what I'm trying to do here today, I, I have obviously some, some great reservations about this. Other board members that I respect have a different perspective and I'm trying to find a path forward. I got a series of about 100 different notes here we can all go through tonight, or maybe we can just move forward with a motion. So I will, I will try to do that. In the interest of, of what we discussed here today and the advice of, of our superintendent outside council and everybody else that has spoken to this point in time, won't we table, motion would be to table the draft call for quality schools? Because the superintendent has hired special counsel. And that special counsel working in conjunction with the superintendent and the WISD board has had the sufficient time to bring perfected proposal before the board for consideration. Said plainly, we hire counsel that solely represents this district, review this with us and with our, our staff. And then at that point in time, hopefully we have a proposal that is more perfected, which should give the ability, if this board chose to move forward, frankly, a better opportunity for success and greater protections and any liabilities that may be out there that we currently aren't, aren't aware of. Because again, I, there's nobody with a straight face that can sit on this dais here today and say that we feel extremely comfortable that we have had a great deal of, of knowledge and in-depthness to very specialized programs of, of the state of Texas in, in, in education. I think that's a responsible path forward that we can do collectively. And if we do that, you have my commitment to work in good faith to try to put something together. That makes sense. This would also give our superintendents a time to perhaps think through and talk through this public process. Andrea, you've talked about public process since you've been on this board. You've done so passionately and you've grown a great deal of experience in that to this board. Ideally, if you wanted, my opinion, I think putting this into the comprehensive and the vision plan, that's more on the menu, as a potential revenue source and a greater potential educational opportunity for Texans across our state is the most appropriate venue in that. But that, I, I will also confess, that takes time and, and it is a long, thorough process. So maybe we have some type of interim charge of, of some type of public process that goes on that's different than that. I think ideally would be put in that bigger picture because I think it, it, it would be addressed in, in many different forms and fashions. But that's my motion and that is my, my intention.
So can I just summarize? You're making a motion that we authorize the superintendent to hire a council to help us draft a call for quality schools and bring that to the board?
Yeah, to take the current draft, Ken, and, and, and help perfect that, answer, continue to answer some of our questions. You know, there's some, there's some things that we talked about today that I think are.
Will, can we make it just simple because Dottie's got to write this out? I just want to make sure that we have something simple.
I'll repeat it. To table, to table the draft call for quality of schools until the superintendent has had, has hired a special counsel. That counsel and superintendent working in conjunction with the WISD board had sufficient time to bring a perfected proposal for the board for consideration.
All right. We have a motion that's on the table. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. I'm going to open it up for discussion. I haven't heard from Dr. Campbell very much. Give him an opportunity if he wants to speak and any other board member. Motion and a second. Discussion now.
I wonder, Will, if you'd be willing to amend your motion to go ahead and approve the call for quality schools. Pairing that with the independent counsel. So it would be a both and motion versus what you motion where it's independent counsel or special counsel first and then a formulation of the, the agreement.
So approve for quality schools and which would be subject to the review
of special counsel, independent special counsel. Yes.
Representing.
That's right. So it, it couples together the desire to move forward along with your desire, which I share with you to have independent special counsel, which Mr. O'Nannon said is a wise decision.
So, so I don't necessarily have an issue with that. I just want to understand your mind, Rob, how you see that actually logistically taking place, you know, tomorrow, right? So, so to this motion, what does that mean to you? We, we obviously are, I believe, have a, a desire to have our own independent counsel review the call for quality schools. I would anticipate something within that call that that individual is informed, is going to have some type of comment or, or proposed, you know, amendment to the, the current draft document. But you're saying approve the quality of schools, which would be subject to review by special counsel for WISD. Help me, maybe you, Joe, maybe you have spotted this. How, how does this actually work and evolve moving forward? I mean, we wouldn't want to not see a document that our, our own attorney changed, right? On both ends, no matter how you feel about it.
I think based on prior experience, we've approved policy and we've done it subject to review of counsel or review of TASB advisors, with the understanding that once, once the, once it's approved, then the superintendent has authority to send it out without reconvening the board. Typically, the superintendent would then send it out to us and advise us. And then if there was an issue, the board president would call another special meeting to, to sort of address it. So it's more of just keeping us posted on, on that. Now, yeah, I, I see the merit in that in the sense that really we're not, are not going to have a whole lot of further input on this until we get proposals back. And at that time, I think that's when Mr. O'Handon certainly advised that we, we seek advice of councils, we negotiate a contract and all of that. So I just, I hate to put too much more administrative time into sending out a call for quality public school when really there's going to be a, a more intensive process involved in actually reviewing. I'm also respectful of the comments that Dr. Bone Wall made in regard to, this is a step, I mean, this is a step that we haven't fully vetted with our, all our teams and everything. Part of that is just unfortunately we're in the summer and it's, it's hard to kind of, you know, share information like this effectively. But I, I think that's kind of how that would work. And so I, I, I understand kind of what Rob wants to do in amending that motion. I think that's something to consider.
So, you know, for example, I had a great deal of, of questions in the, in the RFP about indemnity, how exactly these kids would be accounted for, what we, we, what would we be responsible for? You know, for example, are we going to make in this RFP, which I think would be an important piece? You know, we put our transfer policy in there. You know, to my knowledge, and, and again, Ken or Joe or, or Dr. Bone Wall or some of our staff here grade my paper, we don't take, we have a lot of discretion in the kids in which come into this district. And to my understanding, we take the cream of the crop in most circumstances. Is that, is that your understanding, Ken?
Absolutely.
You've been here for what, 18 years? That's your understanding what we do? This is being pitched as, as something to give disadvantaged kids an opportunity in, for performing school districts. I'm not trying to prove a point here. I'm just trying to get clarity on exactly what that means in our transfer policy. We're, we're doing one thing. That's right now subject to this proposal. Are we going to do something different, perhaps?
No, it, it sounds to me like we would absolutely put our transfer policy in there, that each student would have to step up to that.
And, and so would those teachers at that charter school, for example, would they, would they have the minimum standards of the state? Or would they, or would we provide higher standards, for example? Would we, would, would we make a, but it should, Andrea, it makes a big difference in the proposal. For example, if I'm only hiring certified teachers and I could go through and have a combination hybrid of certified and uncertified teachers as part of my labor force for this charter, or perhaps maybe I had a strategy of just having uncertified teachers. There is a huge consequence to that decision and standards in your labor costs, just like it is for anybody.
But the standard T E A, the standard T E A call for, call for schools, this RFP that we would be using, it asks all of those questions in it.
I, I understand that. I'm saying the state is the basic standard, basic minimum. I'm saying we have a higher standard. We have a standard of, of maintaining a much higher standard in this district. And if our name is going to be on something, we take the baseline, the basic element of, of what the state has set, we elevate that to what we have set in this district in order to then go out and to create an opportunity for kids to not just live by the minimum standards of the state, but to live by the W I S D standards in which we've applied within this district. There's a labor cost associated with that. There's real cost associated with that.
Well, if I may-
Ken, Ken, can I, can I come in?
Go ahead.
Yeah. So, Will, I appreciate your exploratory questions immensely, and you've done a really comprehensive holistic job. My caution would be just not to get down in the weeds because we are to support our superintendent as our district leader on such cause. And so we have a motion on the table. I've suggested an amendment on that, and we need not chase armed deal trails at this point and deal with the matter at hand in my estimation. Thank you, Ken, for letting me interject.
You're welcome. And I agree with you. But as Mr. O'Handon so finely placed that we could actually cost ourselves out of a position, because we would continue to add standards on to that. And there may not be a charter school that can live up to that. But we won't know that until we send that out.
But if it's not in the RFP, you won't even know what that standard to be.
Exactly right.
Can I, can I, can I insert something here? Just briefly?
I don't think a godly voice coming-
I'll try and, I'll try and be succinct. Kind of, that, that, there are two levels that, that, thinking about this, about the lawyer. There's, there, what you're, what I would think that the RFP process is to throw the net out and see who, who, who responds. Then what, then, those responses are going to be significantly educational and they're going to, the, the RFP asks them to explain how they're going to meet all these quality standards and all this other thing. After, after you see that and you evaluate that, and there may be multiple proposals, there are, you then craft a performance contract. Now, when you're doing a performance contract, you may lift elements out of somebody other's proposal or something of that nature that you like, or, or something of that nature and you want to have as a part of the negotiation. So, and I think by trying to be overly prescription on the, on the front end, you're, you might be keeping yourself from getting a myriad of proposals that look at this in, in different ways and would reduce the amount of information that you have to do the, the final negotiation. The nature of this enterprise is that this isn't like buying, this isn't like buying a rug or buying a construction project where there's specs out there and you're bidding the specs. This is someone's making you a proposal to do things that will be highly negotiated once you get it. I think the lawyer, and I do think you need a lawyer, I think the lawyer would be better tasked with advising you with respect to the lawyer kind of things, like how are we going to identify ourselves? How are we going to protect ourselves? And then let your staff decide the educational things, your educational staff, decide on whether this is a good idea or it ain't a good idea with respect to how we provide education to kids in this state. So there are separate tasks, but they're, they're a little bit different. I think if you get any perspective on the front end, you may, you may keep yourself from getting information on the back end.
Yeah, I would agree. I mean, page 11 of, of this application is the school overview, executive summary, the mission and vision, and it gives very specific instructions about, you know, how, how they're going to identify the students in the community and, and, you know, what they're going to expect of those students and how they're going to, you know, measure those students. So, I mean, we're going to, like you're saying, Mr. O'Handon, we're going to get a lot of great information from people that submit this as to how they would plan to run the school to, to meet the standards. They're, they're not expecting to work with W I S D and, and expect us, they wouldn't think that we're going to allow them to run a school at the lower standards than what we currently run our school at. So they, they want to hitch themselves to our wagon and they know they're going to have to, in my opinion, if they are, they're going to submit an RFP, they know they're going to have to submit an RFP that shows that they're willing to come up to our standards.
And we keep saying we don't know if we're going to get-
Right.
-a proposal or not. But I promise you, we're going to get a proposal. We wouldn't be sitting here tonight if we didn't think we were going to be getting a proposal. So I just want to make that clear, that people are prepared to do this. It's not something they've come into lightly, and I think they're ready to move.
So-
May I real quick?
Yeah.
The benefit of this forum too is, this is public record. So whoever might desire to submit a proposal is going to have the benefit of this discussion so they can, you know, this, you know, might not have all the detail, our request for quality school might not have all the detail of what we've discussed tonight. Well, there's a lot more detail out there. So I think that will be helpful as well.
Fair, fair point, Joe. Let me, um, let me try to work with-
Will, before you, Will, Will, can I just interject something very quickly?
I mean, I mean-
This, Rob.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Rob.
Yeah. So, you know, I, I want to caution us on any kind of ostentatious attitude that we might have of receiving a less performing district. I hope that we, we have a partnering organization out there that is just, you know, doing an incredible job. Do you understand what I'm saying? So let's just be careful about any kind of, we got this figured out in education system and you partnering organization do not. I hope that's received. Forgive me, Will, for interrupting.
Right, no problem.
That's a fair point, Rob. Thank you.
The, uh, so where I'm, I'm hesitant to your recommendation, I, I think I'm 80% of the way there, but I want to give the superintendent at least a discretion. And, and perhaps if you're willing, Rob, you can inherit some responsibility there as well as our board president. What if, for example, as we all agree, we need to hire specialized counsel to review this, this, this call for quality schools, what if there is something more than, than dotting some i's and crossing some t's and something of, of, of some significance that the superintendent and the counsel in which we heard believed to be significant? We're not going to obviously want to just move forward with a document in which both our superintendent and our attorney now have said, you know, you didn't think about this, let's add this into the document. That's my only hesitation. So I, I, I tried-
I think, I think, I think that Joe addressed that. Obviously, that's not going to happen. And once Dr. Bone Wall gives us that call for quality schools, then if we have some concerns, then we come back together for a special call meeting.
Because see, what I'm understanding your motion to be, Rob, is that we would not be coming together, back together to approve a call for quality schools. So, so I, I tried to put this together in, in the interest, again, of, of developing a consensus here and working with your recommendation. Approve for quality, approve, I make a motion to approve of quality schools, which would be subject to review of special counsel hired by our superintendent here at W I S D, and based off the recommendation of the superintendent to move forward or to bring a, a reviewed document back to this board. In other words, giving our superintendent the discretion. Those are minor issues. We can move forward with the quality of schools or in our discussion and work with special counsel, we have discovered some, some larger subject matter that would be relevant for this board to, to review and to make a decision on. Does that make sense to you? Anybody else have any better ideas? I'm, I'm all ears. But I'm trying to figure out a way in which we're hiring an attorney. Why are we hiring an attorney to review the documents and the circumstance in which we're in? But we're not going to take any type of counsel from that attorney and send a proposal forward without this board saying grace one way or another over it. That's, that's the piece that I'm having a hard time fully comprehending. Somebody, maybe Joe, maybe you can help clarify that for me. So.
Let me ask Dr. Bone Wall also, if, if that, if he's directed to-
Turn on your microphone, Joe.
Let me talk in my microphone. I think that's what happened to me last time. If we, if we approve the call for quality school, subject to review of counsel, and we allowed Dr. Bone Wall to, to engage counsel and discuss it with counsel and to finalize it with counsel, then we've, we've approved it subject to any modifications counsel might suggest. Now, it would be then up to Dr. Bone Wall if there's some more significant things to then bring that back to us as a board to look at again. Would, would you be comfortable in that situation?
And that's what I was trying to get in this motion.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you for being thoughtful about that. Not knowing what we're going to find, I, I would be comfortable if the board expressed and approved for me to work with counsel and if there's no substantive changes to move forward with publishing the call. But I can certainly understand what Mr. Conley's sharing in terms of, it's my desire that the, that we all be on the same page. And so what I might consider substantive may be different. And so I would want to make sure that I'm lockstep with this board and, and whatever goes out.
Well, I'm sure that you would communicate with the board prior to any gigantic step. And at that point, we could all say, hold on, let's, we need to talk about that. I would hope to see the proposal before it went out and have a chance to read over that.
Yeah. I see this working much like we reviewed Dr. Bone Wall's contract.
Yeah. So under that spirit, I will withdraw my first motion if it's amenable to my second. And if so, I will make a new motion to, for the, the approval for the quality schools, which is subject to, with subject to review by special counsel hired by our superintendent for W I S D, and a recommendation of the superintendent to move forward at, at his discretion, meaning we believe it's minor substantive improvements. He sends it. If it's, if it, there's larger, more significant subject matter, he brings it back to this board and we work it out.
So, yeah, it is. The only thing I might want to add to that is it, is it like a deadline for that? A deadline for that? So like, if we, and then maybe we do this as a second motion to kind of work towards the dates that you've brought forward to us? And maybe we just add a second, a, a, a pre-deadline to the first one for the complete proposals and we create a, another line that's a deadline for the basically publishing of the call, call for schools? That it be done by X date so that they have time to, to submit them by the 26th?
I, I think, Andrea, I think Will's amended his motion, and so I'll second that-
Okay.
And then we'll go to the discussion.
Oh, sorry. Okay. So my discussion is do, should we add a date to that or should we add a date to, and have a second motion on the timeline?
I think we definitely need a date because I think we're kind of in a hurry here.
Right.
Look, guys, I'm not trying to play this out any further, but what, why are we in a hurry? Well, what, what is setting the, the urgency of, of that exact statement, Ken? What, what did you mean by that?
I'll tell you what I think is, is that we need to get this out so that our people who are going to respond to that have time to work with that and we do have kind of a timeline to go through that so that we can have as much time for negotiation as we can possibly get. I don't want to drag this out and then we only have two or three days to negotiate. I'd like to get the, the call for quality schools out quickly, get some responses back, and then that gives us a lot of time to talk about that and make sure that we are getting exactly what we're asking.
And I think we could do that in a second motion where we adopt this timeline and, and perhaps add a, a date for the publishing of the call for quality schools.
Be published by August 1st or something?
How about this? When's our, Dottie, when's our next board meeting?
August 3rd, it's a-
August 3rd? God, we're here all the time. God, we're here all the time.
That's why we get paid.
That's our that's our that's our budget workshop.
Our workshop, I guess, when we have our our normal, regular scheduled meeting, when's that supposed to be?
We're going to push you back to August, August twenty second.
See, it is always changing. This is why I ask. So August twenty second. I'm not trying to bog this down internally, and I I think there's a sense of urgency by at least a majority of the board. So if you, how about we say the motion that I made, which is approve for quality schools, which is subject to review of special counsel selected by W I S D superintendent and based on the recommendation of superintendent to move forward or bring back to the board by August twenty second. That gives you a deadline. It gives, what's today? Gives basically a month at the most. If there is no significant subject matter, our superintendent can send that along whenever he felt like it met these requirements. If not, we're sitting there August the twenty second. I mean, we have been. But that that's not germane to me.
I I would enjoy some feedback from the board regarding the timeline in terms of when I put this together in this draft. It was done with the desire for expediency based on feedback I had received from the board. The technical timeline in order to qualify for consideration for the additional eighteen eighty-two funds is mid-October. So I I know I mentioned earlier, tried to build a little brace period in there, but technically what we're publishing here is what we're communicating to any partners about the timeframe when things will take place. So my wondering to the board is if you would have a comfort level with meeting that mid-October timeline for the finality of this entirety, which would provide a little more breathing room for me to secure counsel, review this, and publish it.
We split the difference and say October one be the 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 final, you know, get it done by then instead of mid-October?
We could. It was really built around the board meeting, was my thought process of the October, I think, seventeenth is the.
These are a may I ask a question about the the T E A fluid deadlines? And maybe some of the other interests that are here that are more familiar with T E A can answer this. These are self-imposed deadlines by Texas Education Agency. This is state money. In other words, there's no federal requirement to these funds.
Okay.
Anybody know the answer to that? The only.
Moises, do you have something? Yeah, there's two policies that govern how RFPs are supposed to be worded or kind of you have your C H local and C H legal that kind of designate what the RFP is supposed to contain. And usually your RFP needs to run two weeks consecutively in the newspaper, especially if it's over fifty thousand. And just to kind of lessen some of your concerns in the RFP and what's included in there, the RFP needs to be the purpose of mainly of the RFP is to have open competition among the vendors. So you don't want to make it as restrictive. That's going to prevent that. So that's.
Say the last part again, Moises. Say that last part that you just stated.
Your RFP has to be kind of not too restrictive that we all not allow open competition.
Oh, yes, yes, no, of course. You may have misunderstood my comment. I understand a lot of these timelines to be set because of what our superintendent has been told. T E A has set these deadlines for potential financial assistance. That is what I'm speaking to specifically, not not to the law and how the timelines and all the competitive nature of an RFP.
Yeah, the only timeline that I see there is that we need to advertise it, that we need to run it for two consecutive weeks now. The other TA deadlines, we might be subject to those.
Well, and that's what I'm trying to get to. I I understand this timeline to be kind of based off of timelines in which T E A has given you, Greg, to to apply and to meet certain financial assistance opportunities through through one of these processes. Sounds to be kind of a fluid date, and if it's state, unless it's legislatively specific, then they have discretion on those timelines, meaning T E A has discretion on those timelines. And if this is an important program to the state, then the state should be able to amend those timelines to try to accommodate some financial assistance is is my experience in that. So the timeline, I guess, is is what I'm trying to understand better in the interest of trying to put together this motion to where we can have some clarity, some direction, some responsibility, and go home.
Okay, just to summarize, we have a motion on the table right now.
You have a motion and a second on the table. I was willing to add a deadline to that to give the board comfort that this just wouldn't sit in the back room of Greg's office for five months. And I came up with the next normally called meeting of this.
August.
Board in August, August, August board meeting. And then members started discussing, you know, some different types of dates, and I was trying to understand what is driving those dates.
So that's an amendment to this motion. Would anybody say that amiss?
I'll second it so we can have some further discussion.
Okay.
Greg, what do you what do you think of that deadline?
I think that it's it's a little difficult sitting here right now, not knowing exactly who that legal assistance is, to say that it'll be done next week. At the same time, as soon as we can secure that person, I don't see this being an extremely time-consuming process from that point forward. If the board's will is to move forward with putting this out, it's certainly in my best interest to get it done as expediently as possible so that we can provide ample time for responses to take place. I would be interested in the board's thoughts, again, about moving back the proposal and interview timeframes, knowing that that still allows us to live within the timeline T E A has set forth to qualify for the additional funding. That's certainly an aspect of this that we've considered, so I do consider that a driver in the decision-making process. But knowing that we have that time, to to Mr. Conley's point, it would make me feel a little more comfortable if we could provide that additional time by adjusting that board vote to the October meeting, working backwards from there like I did here.
I'm a hundred percent for that because what that does is give us more time to work that out. And we may find somebody that we love in the first few weeks, and then we can move forward then. But if we set a deadline of that length of time, I mean, I don't think that changes anything.
And it allows some time to get some community input, too, in the process, which we've all said we want.
Yep.
And you're certain that our October board meeting date does not conflict with that additional fund date?
It's it's noted as mid-October, and when I spoke to the T E A representative that you and I.
Yeah.
Talked with, you know, she mentioned that there was some flexibility.
Okay.
Within that timeframe.
State funds, they usually have discretion and flexibility if it's solely straight state money.
In the spirit of consensus, I would be amenable to all of that.
All right. So we have a second. I mean, you have a motion, we have a second. I'm going to go ahead and call the question. Hold on one moment.
One, Ms. Jones made a really astute point. I had actually dotted down a note in the criteria regarding facility safety. So I know the board is now considering a motion based on what's in front of you, given the amended timeline. I would like to just put that forward that I think that that's something that I agree with your comment, that given the requirements that are coming to us to ensure student safety, the enhanced requirements, that that we have some language that addresses an expectation of, you know, safe facility for students.
I totally agree. And and this, if this passes, then we give that to you. You go to the lawyers and you figure all that out as much as you can.
Putting an amended timeline, right?
Yeah.
And the reflection of the minimum standards for the for the committee as well, dialogue about that. So just to be clear and make try to improve, make Dottie's job easier. Approve for quality schools, make a motion to approve for quality schools, which is subject to review of special counsel, in which our superintendent here at W I S D will hire and make a recommendation of the superintendent to move forward or to bring back to the school board by, then we have a timeline.
August twenty second.
By August twenty second.
Dottie, do you have that? Okay, that's that's the motion.
Second.
And the second. Okay? All in favor, raise your right hand. That'll be one, two, three, four, five, seven, four, zero, oh. Okay. Is there any more discussion tonight? Is there anything else we need to do?
I had a question.
Yes, sir.
Who is that?
Moises.
Oh, Moises, go ahead.
On the since we're going to contract a a counsel, how long will the counsel be hired? And if those fees is going to exceed at one point or within the year fifty thousand? I know we are not required to do an R F Q for professional services, but if that doesn't exceed fifty thousand, we probably are going to need to do an R F Q.
Well, we hope it doesn't exceed fifty thousand. We're hoping we can get this done cheaper, and we hope that somebody in the state loves us enough to help us with that.
Can I also move that we have Dr. Bonewold move forward with applying for the grant to support this process so that we we have those funds if we need them and find out exactly what we can use them for? So is that an accurate, succinct enough motion?
We have a motion.
Logistically, that's that's not an item on the agenda.
Oh.
Board to move forward with, but I could share with you that in my conversation today, that's already in motion.
Okay.
And and my understanding is it's approximately two weeks before I should have some solid information on the consulting firm that we would be assigned to by T E A.
Okay, cool. Thanks.
Moises, thank you for being the wet blanket.
Hey, Ken.
Yes, my friend. I mean, doctor.
Hey, I I wanted to thank you, Ken, for, thank you, Ken, for facilitating this meeting night as I'm out of town. I appreciate your willingness immensely. And also for Dr. Bonewold, thank you for your thoughtful, methodical approach regarding this issue. And thank you, board, for a very comprehensive holistic discussion this evening.
And thanks to all the folks that joined remotely and answered all of our questions.
Yes. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. O'Handlon, for sure. I would entertain a motion at this time.
Since I'm sitting in the make a motion to adjourn chair, then I would like to make a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn is accepted. We are adjourned at this time.